If you could all please mute your microphones while Kathy's doing her presentation, that would be great. I am Cheryl Angeles, President and CEO of the San Mateo Warrior Chamber of Commerce. Someone needs to mute. Okay, so very pleased to have you here today. Restaurants are an essential part of our business life. And I know that everyone is struggling right now, so we really feel for you. And I think that this new program that Rakuten is launching is exciting and will help you. And so at this time, I just want to explain a couple of housekeeping rules. You'll be muted, and then after Kathy finishes her presentation, then we will have Q and A. And then if you don't mind, if you could please stay on so we can just have a chat. I would just like to hear how you're doing, what's going on, share ideas. So with that, here is Kathy Novelli with Rakuten, one of our larger employers in San Mateo. So take it away, Kathy.
Yeah, thank you, Cheryl, and hello, everyone. Thank you for taking the time. I want to spend probably 10, 15 minutes introducing you guys to Rakuten Takeout. It is a free platform, and as the name implies, it doesn't offer delivery. It is simply a way to stand up your restaurant online or on a phone, allowing consumers to order food for pickup from your restaurant. The reason why Rakuten started this. So Rakuten, if you guys haven't seen it, it's a gigantic building in San Mateo, right where 92 meets 101. And Rakuten actually started as a company in Japan, as the name sort of implies. And it is a global holding company of many, many businesses. With Rakuten, you guys might also know them as the brand that you see on Steph Curry's jersey, but we are sponsor of the Warriors, very proud sponsor of the Warriors. But sponsoring the Warriors was really our first entry into the U.S., bringing this major tech company from Japan into America. And so Rakuten is a cash back site in America, but it also is this holding company with many other business units behind it, now with Rakuten Takeout being the latest. The reason why I even mentioned Rakuten from Japan is because a lot of people wonder why we are offering a free platform and sort of what's behind it. And when you've got a major holding company behind it, you've got a lot of business units, some of which are making a ton of money, and some of which will never make money. For instance, Rakuten also has a company called Rakuten Medical. It invests money into things such as helping to find this vaccine for coronavirus, such as helping to fight cancer. That will never be a money-making business unit. And we actually anticipate Rakuten Takeout to not be a money-making business unit for Rakuten. But what we do hope it will be is a platform that will help drive revenue for local restaurants, particularly in this time of need. We built out this solution, really taking us back to the groundwork of where Rakuten started 27 years ago, when Micky Micky Tani in Japan realized that all of these mom and pop retailers were essentially being put out of business by Amazon. And he knew that there was a way to quickly help them stand up online e-commerce in a very simple manner. And when coronavirus hit, he knew that we had the technology and the talent to create something to help the local restaurant industry. This isn't the perfect product that we launched, but we're actually continuing to refine it. And we expect it to be perfect and scalable across the United States very soon. But we started in San Mateo, as it's our backyard, and we wanted to get a solution out there fast, because every single day that goes by is another day where another restaurant closes. And so let me introduce you guys to what Takeout is. And then hopefully, in just a few minutes, I can open it up for any and all questions that you guys might have. So first and foremost, Rakuten Takeout is a self-serve platform that enables restaurants to stand up online ordering for Takeout. So to be really clear, this is not a platform that provides delivery. It is simply a platform that enables consumers to find your restaurant, browse the menu, order and pay, and then they themselves go into your restaurant to pick up the orders. This is a platform that will have zero fees, meaning zero transaction fees, and also zero merchant credit card processing fees until November 2020. And when that, and I should actually say, November 2020 would be the earliest that we start charging transaction fees. We may just extend that, pending how the economy and everything is going. And I'll actually show with you sort of the low transaction fees and the way that Rakuten works, because most of that transaction fee will actually go back to your customers in the form of cash back, sort of providing them that incentive to continue to order through Takeout with you guys. But I'll get through more of that in a minute. But first, so how Rakuten Takeout works? First and foremost, we would need your restaurant to set up. Go online, build out your menu, publish your site, and it is live. It is a website that is available, not just on the Rakuten platform, but one that you guys can also use to share via email or social channels so that people know that they can order for Takeout with you guys. Next, once you guys are live, customers can start ordering. There is a console that I will show you guys that allows you to see that a new order has come in, allows you to quickly prepare and have the order ready for pickup when your customer arrives. So first, the first sort of point of engagement with Rakuten Takeout is with this dashboard that we call the admin dashboard. Now, this is where you would build out your beautiful site and add your menu items and imagery for each item, if you've got imagery to go along with that. We have built this so that it is really simple and intuitive. We have certain restaurants who have built out their website within an hour and a half. And then we have those that want a little bit more assistance, and we've got an operations team who can help support the build-out of your websites if you need support. But step one is just registering. So you register with your restaurant name, phone number, email address. And you do this at this site called merchants.rakutenready.com. After this presentation, we'll actually send this deck to you guys, so you can open it up, click on this, and go directly if you are interested in signing up. It simply takes you through all of the steps that are involved, from creating your menu. You can select menu items, add in a menu item, the price, details, any additional options that you would want, such as additional toppings or double the meat, whatever customizations that you offer for those items. And you can add an image. This is very fast and simple. Everything from the imagery is drag and drop. You can also include menu headers such as appetizers, beverages, entrees, and put them in order. You would then add in the tax. I think it defaults toward 8.25, but you can change that. But I think anyone in San Mateo would be 8.25, I believe. Then you enter your bank account information. A lot of people are curious why this is needed. Simple, your customers would be ordering through Rakuten Takeout, and we would be essentially the processor. So for that money that the customers paid to get back into your pocket, we need your bank account information. And just to reiterate, Rakuten Takeout is 100% free to customers and 100% free to you. So every single order that comes in, every single cent of that transaction and that order goes directly into your bank account here. And essentially, the final step is you add in your location's hours for each day so they know what the hours are of availability for pickup. And then once everything is set, you simply toggle this button to publish, and you are up and running with your own custom website. You'll recognize that the user experience looks and feels a lot like the online delivery aggregator such as DoorDash or Grubhub. We wanted that because there is sort of that universal user experience that people are comfortable with, so they can simply scroll down and see all of the menu items, all of the images added to their order. Customers pay online, and then usually there's about, within 24 hours, all of the orders within one day will be paid into your account that you set up. Now, the way Rakuten Takeout works. So Rakuten Takeout is essentially a product that lives within the Rakuten product. So if you're unfamiliar with Rakuten, you could go to rakuten.com. And rakuten.com provides cash back. So let's say, you could see right here, right in the screenshot, there's a Macy's, 10% cash back. So if I click on that, I could get taken to Macy's, purchase something, let's say for $100, and I'm going to get $10 cash back. It's really intended to drive traffic and provide incentive for customers to shop with retailers, and now they're local restaurants. So we are, Rakuten Takeout is integrated within Rakuten. If you go to rakuten.com/takeout, you will be introduced to Rakuten Takeout. You will be able to click on this view restaurants from a consumer perspective, see all of the restaurants that are available in your area. And as mentioned, we're available only in the San Mateo area right now. So San Mateo, there are sprinklings of restaurants in Burlingame and Redwood City, but the vast, vast majority are in San Mateo. And Rakuten is sending out emails and promotional assets to everyone within the San Mateo area to help drive the traffic and the interest in ordering online for Takeout. So as you can see, once you get in and you are on a menu, if I click on the black garlic pork ramen, an overlay pops up so that you can see all of the sort of customization that's available, and then you can add it to your cart. Next, once the customer actually places their order, you receive that order on what we call the order console. So there will be some hardware required. However, hardware could be your mobile phone. You could go simply to your order console. And actually, let me share the order console with you. So in the same dashboard where we were in, where we created our menu and created our pricing, down below, you can either click on open console, or if you wanted to leave this open for all of your employees, or let's say you've got two people who you have looking out for online orders, they can grab their phone, open up their camera, and essentially take a picture of that QR code, and it will open up this console onto their phone. So every single employee can have this available in their back pocket. But it makes sort of management of seeing which online orders are coming in really scalable, so it doesn't have to be upon one person to see if a new order is coming in. So when a new order comes in, the console will look like this, where you will see a brand-new order that's represented by this gray. And actually, sorry, let me move my zoom over so I can see what I'm talking about. On this, then you can see there's this new order placed by Emma Roberts. And here are all of the details of what she wants. You could see the customization that she added. And when you have received this information, you can say, okay, I'm going to start prepping. You press that start prepping button. And then suddenly, you are, you can sort of see, you know, there's a new order. Sorry, this sort of went back in steps. But you could see this new order came in, and you'll be notified with a ping. You will also be notified over SMS if you so choose that when you set up, so it can notify you in many different ways. And if you do not click prep the order within a certain amount of time, our operations teams will actually call and make sure that you guys received the new order. So step one, when you get that new order for Emma Roberts, is you click start prepping. This not only sort of gets the setup time going. For instance, let's say you set up that every order should set for 15 minutes, would tell the customer that you need 15 minutes to cook it. The second you click start prepping, that 15-minute countdown begins. And that essentially starts telling the customer, hey, your order's been prepped, and it will be ready in 15 minutes. And I should say that that lead time is customizable. So at different times of the day, you want to turn that lead time into five minutes, you can do that. At other times, it might be 20 minutes, you can totally customize that. Once you have prepared the order, you can click that it is ready for pickup, and the user will get an email as well as a text letting them know that the order is ready for pickup. And also, you can sort of see within this console, you can see all current, future, and past orders. Now, by future, most people, I'd say about 98%, when they order, they are ordering for pickup as soon as possible. But there are some where, for instance, they know they want to order for dinner, but they know they're not going to have time right before, so they might set it and schedule it for two hours down the road. So you can actually see, oh, what orders are queued up for, not right now, but for maybe tonight for dinner. Down here is where you could set your default time. So again, if your orders typically take five minutes, you could set it for five. But you want to find that good average. So no matter how big or small the order is, you feel confident that that general lead time will work. If someone puts in this massive order and you know you're going to need more time, you can change that lead time for a specific order. Then also, up here, you can cancel your order, which, you know, we highly recommend you try not to do. But if you do have to do it, try to do it right away. So for instance, if an order comes through, and for some reason or another, you had to close your restaurant early, you might have to cancel that order. But all you have to do is click the button, and Rakuten takes care of all of the communications and refunds that are necessary. If you want further information about the person, you could click info. And if you need to call them, for instance, if before they place the order, you had the item stocked up, but suddenly you ran out of chicken, and you need to have them switch up their order, then you can give them a call. So generally, you know, then, once you let them know that the order is available for pickup, they can come pick it up. And you know, the one thing that we have learned a lot and heard a lot is that more and more customers are really sensitive about contact right now, right? They don't, in a perfect world, they're not touching your restaurant door. They're not paying or touching the keypads of anything. And in a perfect world, orders are sort of lined up perfectly, you know, cooked to the time of their arrival and set there so that they can just pick it up and not have to have contact with anyone. And having technology like this that actually knows when the customers are coming allows you to provide that type of fulfillment. So going back to Rakuten Takeout, there will be zero transaction fees, and we'll be driving traffic through rakuten.com, which this says 15 million engaged consumers who are hungry, but in actuality, it's more like 20,000 in the San Mateo area. That's a national number, the 15 million. And so going into the details, there is never going to be a setup fee. There will never be a monthly fee. There is no advertising fee. Down the road, should you want some, there will be some ad solutions if you need additional traffic, but we don't even have those packages built yet. After November 2020, two fees will kick in. One is a 2.9% merchant fee. So this would be your standard fee that you will pay anytime a customer uses a credit card. And also a 9.9% transaction fee. Now, it might sound steep for Takeout, almost 10%, but the way Rakuten works, as mentioned, is we give cash back to the customers. And so of that 9.9%, at least 5% will be given back to your customers, which drives a real incentive for them, because, you know, if they order Takeout through other platforms, not only are you often paying transaction fees or commissions up to 30%, but none of that's going back into your customers' pockets. It's just going into those platforms. So what this allows is for a good chunk of that transaction fee that you're paying to actually go toward incentivizing your customers to repeat this behavior through this channel that is a lot more profitable for more restaurants. And that is it, at least in terms of the materials I have got. I also wanted to share with you a website that you can visit. It's rakutenready.com/takeout. Now, from this website, you can click to become a partner, and go through those steps that I actually took you through that allow you to register and get your website built. There is also a video that takes you through a lot of what I just took you through, but in a little bit more detail, you can actually sort of experience the product and the platform. And you could just get a little bit more detail around how it's simple, fast, and free, how it provides a new channel of revenue for you guys, and frankly, a much more profitable channel. And for a lot of restaurants that didn't have online ordering, especially online ordering just for Takeout, this is a fantastic opportunity to sort of get out there. There are more details down here, sort of touching on why consumers are really digging Takeout. It's not just the cash back. We have promoted it very heavily in the San Mateo area as a fantastic way to support local. Everyone wants to support local, but they don't necessarily know how. And they don't necessarily always know which are those channels that are providing, you know, every cent back to the restaurant. There's been a little movement nationwide of consumers sort of deleting their delivery apps because during coronavirus, they've learned how it hasn't been the most helpful for restaurants. And so we are coming out really strong, letting them know that every cent goes to the restaurant's pockets. So there is, all the detail will be sent out in an email after this, the presentation that I shared. But additionally, I will share with you guys this website that you can go and spend a little bit more time on as well, if you are interested. So that is it in terms of the prepared information that I had. Would love to answer any and all questions that you guys have.
Kathy, thank you very much. If you would like to ask a question, please hit your chat button, and Pauline will, she'll manage this portion. Does anyone have a question?
I have a question, but do you want me to do a chat instead?
No, go ahead.
Okay. We actually were using Square System for most of the transactions. And it has the backend interface into QuickBooks to upload all the order information and so forth. So I'm wondering if Rakuten has something like that that we can also do.
Yes, so remember earlier I was saying the product that we rolled out is not as perfect as we would want? It's because it doesn't include certain features like that, like integrating into Square. We are building those features out, but again, because our goal was to get this out to market as soon as possible, help drive new orders and new customers to local restaurants. We don't have that right now. I don't have a timeframe for that feature exactly, but let me look into that. And if I could provide an answer when we send out the materials, I'll include that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Kang, do you have a question? Alan, do you have a question?
No, not at the moment.
Carrie has a question. How quickly can a restaurant go live?
Yes, so that's a loaded question. Let me go through a few use cases. So if you wanted to go live right now, you can. You can build out your website, create your menu items, your pricing, push publish and go. As mentioned, I think the fastest, at least just from feedback from a restaurant that I heard, that they got live within an hour and a half. But that is because they had recently, I think, signed up with Grubhub or one of the aggregators. So they had all of the sort of information ready to go, and they had photography for most of their items ready to go. So I would say it could be as quick as ours. But if you need support in going live, meaning you need my teams, which I've got teams to help support building out your custom websites, all you'd have to do is email us a menu, or we could actually go and pick up a menu from your restaurant and create the menu for you. In that case, it could take up to two days. But one other factor that's really important in the going live is not just getting on board, but also just getting familiarized with the order console and understanding, you know, how to look out for the sounds or the pings when a new order comes in. We've got an operations team that will come to your restaurant, see what kind of hardware you've got. If you want to print out each order, they'll help you set it up. So pending how long it takes to actually schedule that time with you and whatever other team members you want to have trained, that could impact the time that we are ready, because we don't want to set you live without you being comfortable with sort of the user experience. So the general turnaround time has been anywhere between 24 and 48 hours. But there are those edge cases where there were restaurants that, you know, they wanted certain managers all on board and trying to schedule a time where, you know, three or four of them could all come and get trained, took a few days. So it is, we are available, you know, to stand you guys up and to train everyone and get your hardware loaded up within 24 hours. But, you know, there are these sort of edge cases where if we can't schedule that time soon enough, then it could take a little bit longer.
Okay, we have another question. Is there a sales summary functionality?
Yes, so in the dashboard, I think I had shared, you could sort of see all past and future as well as current orders. So the sale, all of the past will provide that sales summary functionality.
Next question is, can you share any current success stories?
Yes, I don't have a lot of the metrics, unfortunately. Like our product and our operations team actually have a lot of success stories. But there were two restaurants, and I don't want to name them because they're all neighbors, but there were two restaurants specifically that were close to closing. And when they opened this up, it didn't change things overnight, but they did. One got on average five orders per day, five new orders per day. And the other one was getting somewhere between two and three new orders per day. But what was fantastic is they said these new orders were new customers that they had never seen before. And with word growing, every order that they've been getting through Takeout is new, and they've got sort of a few of their loyal past customers. So they feel a lot more optimistic that they will be able to keep their doors open, which was our ultimate goal. And right now, with us focused in San Mateo, we are still perfecting our marketing mix, but we are helping, so if someone actually types in your restaurant in Google, you'll actually see at the top the results driving them to Rakuten Takeout. All of this promotion, Rakuten is paying and funding ourselves. The 20% cash back that's being offered to customers right now for ordering through is The twenty percent cash back that's being offered to customers right now for ordering through is also being funded by Rakuten. So there's a lot of new customers, new business that's being driven through this. And so, you know, we're actually building out some case studies as we speak. So I might have more details that I could share right after this. So I will share what I can.
Question from Jennifer, how can non restaurants participate to create a full ecosystem for the San Mateo?
Yes, so we are building that out right now. The, the infrastructure needed to support other businesses such as retail is a little bit more challenging. A, because with retail, for instance, there's usually a certain limitation on inventory. And you want that to actually plug into your data feed. So what we're trying to do is tie our system into your POS system so that we can actually gauge the inventory availability. Might take another couple of months, I'll be honest, for other businesses. But for restaurants, and I should actually be really clear, it's not just restaurants. It could be bakeries, it could be cafes, but anyone selling food or beverages can use takeout right now.
Great.
Can we just interrupt for one second? I'm sorry to put you on the spot Kathy, but I just feel like that this is so valuable and I'm wondering if maybe in a couple of weeks, we could schedule you again.
Of course. Of course.
Great.
Yeah, I think, I think we ought to also make a recording of this available to our members on our site.
We have that. We are doing that.
Send out a tickle to restaurant members and the downtown association members to take a look at this with an invitation to that next meeting.
Yes.
Should really be well informed about this.
Yes.
Okay, how is the cash back to the customer done now prior to the fee starting in November?
Yes, so right now, the user experience takes people through the process of first, you know, finding the restaurant that they want to order from, they order. And at the point in which they check out, if they are not currently a Rakuten member, they'll have to sign up. All they need is, is an email address and a phone number. And then once they go through that step, then they're a Rakuten member, meaning not only will they start getting cash back for every takeout order through Rakuten Takeout, but they'll also get cash back from those other offerings that I showed, the ten percent at Macy's and thousands of other outlets. So that's the advantage of our platform is, you know, it is integrated within the DNA of the users to get cash back and that's what sort of incents their decision to select, you know, one restaurant over another or one retailer over another. So just by being a member, they simply get cash back and sort of the, the experience with rakuten.com is, is a little unique in that you do this shopping, you do this food ordering, you get cash back and it sits in your Rakuten account. And what they do is every quarter, they mail out checks. Unless you go in and you elect for direct deposit, then users can do that as well. But it isn't an immediate like, oh, I ordered a hundred dollars from this restaurant and now I got twenty dollars back. It's that twenty dollars goes into their Rakuten account. And every three months, a check is cut from Rakuten to the customers.
Right Kathy, this is Pauline. So I have been a Rakuten member for a long time. And I like to just watch that little cash back bucket. The numbers increase as I keep shopping. So that's a danger, but adding restaurants to it is amazing in my eye.
It is, it is. And for those of you guys who have never used Rakuten, this is the first time restaurants are being integrated into the platform. So consumers are quite excited about it.
Pauline, you need to sign up too. So now too.
I'm converting people.
Yeah. Sign up and let us, you know, start ordering takeout from you.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, I think everyone should order something tonight. We've got Vespucci, we've got Par Three on the phone, we've got Domenico's. So anyway, there's so many fabulous restaurants. Let's keep them in business. Fletch.
I love it. Cheryl, can I ask one quick question?
Carrie.
Any, thank you so much, Pauline. Is there a chance that we could get a, a print material that as an example, when I'm driving around because I'm involved in an essential business currently, I would love to be able to have a tape dispenser sitting in my car seat and some of your materials and just stop and tape them to the doors of businesses to get the visibility of Rakuten out. And as long as I'm, you know, legally out and about anyway, I might as well maximize my steps.
Yes, absolutely. We actually can very simply create some one sheets that we could email out. So I'll include that within the materials that we send out after this.
Awesome. Thank you.
That's awesome. Okay, another question from Jessica. Can customers place orders outside of business hours? For example, if we open at 1:00 PM, are customers allowed to place their orders in the morning and scheduled to pick up when we're open?
Yes, yes. So that's what's fantastic is within the order experience at the very top, it basically starts with when do you want this order? It's either ASAP or schedule for a future time. So they can schedule it for a future time.
Okay, and what are your hours of support that you're available? You know, tutorials, videos, that type.
That is a good question. We have customer service available almost twenty four seven. I want to say it is, it's every single day, I think, eight AM to eleven PM. We've got an email address as well as a phone number, but let me confirm those hours and get back to you. Yesterday, I actually even wrote them down. So it's frustrating me that I don't remember them, but I will, I'll include that with the materials.
Oh, someone joined late and is asking about delivery. Is delivery one of the features? I didn't know you covered that.
Correct. It is not. It is not. And that's how we can afford to make this free.
Good question here. Is there a contract to sign? Can we get out at any time?
Yes. So I do believe there is a contract, but the contract is like a short one pager and it's more around agreeing to sort of a certain level of support. We had, and we only built this into sort of the agreement after we launched and learned our really bad lesson is there was a partner who was not paying attention to their order console. And so there were a whole bunch of orders that were racking up, people showing up and they said they didn't receive the order. Or they were canceling orders after an hour it had been received. So there's a contract that sort of allows us to agree to a certain level of service. But absolutely, you know, if you guys are seeing, you know, you're getting one order per week and it's not providing much. Like especially before the November start, you know, if you guys don't want to be a part of it, you guys can pull out. But I would certainly recommend that until November, when it's free, give it a shot. Yeah.
That's great. See, does Rakuten supply a tablet?
Yes, we will do so for brands that, for restaurants that need one. I know that there's a spectrum, right? There are the restaurants who are like, ah, not another tablet. So we can provide a tablet should you need one. We've got a lot of restaurants who actually prefer to use their back office computer and have each employee scan the console. But if a tablet is needed, yes, we provide one. And we'll set it up and make sure that sort of in the training, you are comfortable with the user experience.
Okay, next question is, does Rakuten store customer information when orders are placed? If so, is customer information accessible by the restaurant for future communication and promotions?
Interesting. That's a good question. I do not know the answer for that, but let me find out what customer information is stored. I'm sure because once someone signs up, it, it's stored and the customer is remembered the next time that they visit. So I'm sure it is. I guess the bigger question is, how do we provide all of that data back to the restaurants? And that's what I'm not sure the answer is. So I will get back to you on that.
Okay, great. Question about how are you marketing to San Mateo residents? How big is your range?
Yep, so the range includes a few cities. So it is San Mateo and it expands to, and I should start by saying, most of our promotions have been to Rakuten members. First and foremost, because there's this base of about twenty thousand people who are already quite familiar with the way Rakuten works and understand the cash back incentive. So we started promotions with emails as well as things like in-app notifications to users within San Mateo, Burlingame, Foster City, Belmont and Redwood Shores. Simply because, you know, while most of the restaurants are in San Mateo, I think we all know that all of these smaller cities right around are sometimes just a five minute drive away. So we wanted to expand the, the area beyond just the city of San Mateo.
See, the downtown association did push it out from Jennifer Chan. Are expand this regionally?
Yes, yes. So right now we're in our pilot market of San Mateo and surrounding cities. Our goal is probably within the next two weeks to expand to Palo Alto and Mountain View. And then eventually throughout the entire Bay Area before we expand beyond the Bay Area. Chances are, we're going to take a very targeted approach. So rather than go, you know, from the Bay Area to the state of California, we're actually going to find focused areas where there are dense neighborhoods of restaurants and major populations of people, especially Rakuten members. We actually believe that after the Bay Area, we'll probably head out into one or two of the boroughs in New York. Then sort of go down the list of major restaurant and metro markets and then slowly expand throughout the US. We're actually also because our mothership is in Japan, we're launching in Japan next week. So it'll be global very quickly.
So since you are launching in San Mateo, it, it's great that the San Mateo population jump on board now, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, there's a question about is there video training?
Yes, so on that website that I had shared and will provide you after this with the materials, it's rakutenready.com/takeout. There's a video on them that, on there that takes you through not only the admin dashboard, but also the order console as well as the consumer view. So you could see what they're experiencing throughout all of this.
Great. Are there any more questions? We marched through these.
Yeah, fantastic questions.
Great.
Very good.
So just so you all know, we do record this and we send out the recording to you afterwards so you can watch it again. We also have a YouTube channel. And we keep all of our webinars on that channel so you can review them. I just would like to thank Kathy.
One more question. Sorry Cheryl.
Ready?
From Jeff brought to, how is customer service handled?
Yes, that's fantastic question. We actually have two groups. We've got one group who is dedicated to merchant customer service. So should you guys have any kind of technical glitch or almost need a reminder of some of the training that you went through, there's a phone number or an email that you can use. But there is a separate phone number and chat through the online experience that customers can call. Though what we have found is, I don't think we've gotten one call yet. It's usually more like that the customer will call the restaurant directly. So we do have customer service available for the end customers through the experience, but we just find they're rarely using it. They'd rather just call the restaurant directly.
Okay, I'm sorry I interrupted you Cheryl.
It's okay. And if you have more questions, we've got this scheduled until eleven thirty, so no problem. But I did want to mention that Rakuten is a very good corporate citizen. They are supporters of our chamber and business community. So I want to thank you for that. And they're also neighbors and so it's wonderful to have you in the neighborhood Kathy. Does anyone else have a question or just a comment? I would love to hear about something that, an idea that, you know, you have done in your restaurant, maybe that could maybe help another restaurateur is, does anyone have something to offer? Okay, well. I've got another question.
Is there a way to help the local people? Like pay it forward kind of thing?
I like that, you know. I'm thinking there's probably a simple feature that we can include. I've been doing a lot of research on sort of what the industry is doing. And I think one easy thing would potentially be allowing customers to put in an order. For instance, for frontline workers in a hospital. So we don't have this defined yet, but we are actually already brainstorming. Nurses Day is a day in May that we're looking to put some kind of program together. Where essentially any order made, Rakuten would fund a second order for for, to somehow deliver to the restaurant. So, or I'm sorry, to the hospital. So as you can see, we haven't figured it out. The team is starting to think about it right now. But fantastic idea. I know my team is actively thinking through how we can do that because I think there is a way where people can help more people in the community, especially those who are struggling to put meals on every table, but especially if we can help local restaurants. At the same time of helping others, we'll certainly do that. We're already thinking through that, starting with Nurses Day. But additionally, I mean, the fact is, is this, all of the impact made on the economy, it's not going to go away the second the shelter in place is lifted.
I have a question.
The economic impact will be long, so we're gonna have programs that are evergreen.
Yeah, that's great. Is it possible to order gift cards through your program? For these restaurants?
Yeah, the only way we would be able to do that is if restaurants added that as a menu item onto, onto their online ordering platform, which we would certainly recommend everyone do. Because I know every customer is looking to help purchase those and help out local restaurants.
Right, because you can make the purchase now and then use it later.
Exactly.
Right, okay. Jennifer Chan from the city wanted to remind everybody that they can always visit the business site on the city of San Mateo and there's a website. I'll send the website out with the recap. But they have resources for all business and employees out in the San Mateo, city of San Mateo website.
As does the chamber and we work very closely with the city. Jennifer's been a wonderful partner, so we're in this together.
Yeah, I want to hear from some of the restaurant owners. Are any of them thinking this might be a great platform for them to try out?
Manuela and Francesco, would you?
Actually, we don't know. For us, it's completely new. The entire idea of takeout, it's new. You have to consider that we are a fine dining restaurant. So people come to our restaurant just to enjoy and having an experience. So stay at the table, having a glass of wine, chatting with us, knowing the chefs. So it's completely a different world for us.
Yes.
The, the idea of the takeout. So why not? We, we are embracing everything. We need to evolve in order to survive because it's extremely hard for us. More than for other restaurants, we are not set like to go place, a takeout place, like Panchovilla, like, I don't know, other, other places, restaurants, they're already doing takeout on a regular basis. So we are still adapting. And it's hard, but we, we, we're managing in some way. And we do have amazing customers. Our customers are absolutely amazing. They are supporting us no matter what. They're ordering for us constantly. They are supporting us no matter what. They're ordering for us constantly. So I mean, we're grateful, we're grateful. But usually people that are ordering ordering for us are the same people are coming to our restaurant physically. Let's say every week, so on Friday, on Tuesday. So the same people are ordering the same dishes that they were ordering inside the restaurant, but as a takeout. We are not known already by other customers outside our regular returning customers. So we may need this program to be more popular and more known by other customers, to reach other customers outside of our comfort zone.
Yeah, I I hope that I'm not going to embarrass anybody, but Dominic from Domenico's I has, he's very creative and has actually done a crab dinner takeout and also pizza to go, pizza making kits, which I think is brilliant, right? Get the kids involved and bring it home. So can you say anything about that Dominic?
Yeah, so it's it's been a process for us as everybody in business today. And challenging. And thank God for my wife. She has the patience to go on and 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 create all these website connections. So we are currently on Chow Now, Uber Eats, Grubhub, DoorDash. And I have a question for Kathy. I did have to step away for a minute through part of the webinar. But the question we have is, we we have a thing called Checkmate. And what Checkmate does is it takes all those other applications and it it automatically brings them into our point of sale so that the chef knows automatically what the order is on the screen. And in addition to that, it also merges and talks to QuickBooks.
Yes.
No? No, it doesn't talk to QuickBooks. My wife's saying no. But anyhow, we were wondering if if your app will be compatible with Checkmate.
Yes. So right now, our app, because we came to market quite fast, we don't have POS integration yet. But that is actually actively being worked on. And the goal will be for it to be able to integrate with any POS system. So whether it is a toast or Checkmate or or what is the other one? NCS, you know, we're we're making them work with all of the major platforms.
Okay, yeah, that's, it's kind of makes it easy. Right now, we're, you know, we just started with these with these Checkmate and Chow Now and
Yeah.
And you know, so the our employee has to then take that order and then physically put it into the our point of sale, which we're using Revel.
Revel.
It's a Checkmate. It's a Checkmate connects to the rubber POS.
So my wife is saying, eventually the app will connect, it's a Checkmate, and then it's a Checkmate will port the order right into our Revel.
Right, exactly. So it sounds like Chuck Point is essentially the aggregator for all of the different orders and channels and brings it all into your POS.
Yes.
Yeah, brilliant. Yeah, I will, I'll confirm whether that's a part of sort of the POS integration that we're working on.
And and I changed the subject and I didn't really answer Cheryl's question, so I apologize. But that was kind of the question that I had. We were very fortunate to be approached by Devil's Canyon, our neighbor, with the crab feed thing that we did Cheryl. And that was organized through the sheriff's nonprofit arm called Code Thirty. And originally, that was going to be done, Code Thirty was trying to help drive business to local businesses. And they came up with this concept of the crab feed. And and then we did the, we did the catering side. We prepared the, the the whole order was crab for two, which is three crabs cooked cooked and cleaned. And then that that was supplied by a crab allshore seafood in Burlingame or San Bruno, rather. And then we did a pasta dish. We made fresh focaccia and a salad for two. And they had a choice of a bottle of wine or beer from Devil's Canyon. And we, there was over 400 of them sold, 425 of them were sold.
Great.
And we spent the whole day Saturday and people picked a time to to come by the winery to pick up their order. And we had them all ready. It was a lot of work, but it was real exciting and the response was amazing. And we're very grateful for the Sheriff's Department and Devil's Canyon for bringing us into this opportunity. And it helped. And every business, and every little bit of business helps.
You're making me hungry.
So we're doing takeout. We started that. We we shut down for one full week. I think we just finished our fourth or fifth week of takeout. And we were open only Wednesday to Sunday. Now we just opened up Tuesday last night and it was really nothing, but we're hoping that builds up as well. We're, you know, we're doing everything we can to stay alive.
Thank you. There's a couple more comments that I think are important. So Pauline, if you don't mind reading those.
Sure, a comment actually from Lauren. And if anybody has anything, ideas that they'd like to promote, email them to lauren@sanmateochamber.org and we'll get it on social media. You can send them to me as well. We cover both Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. We'll, we'll help you out there. Jennifer, yeah, she's asking, can any business comment, what do you think may be the difficult part for you to start, you know, setting up your Rakuten site? What's prohibiting you from starting it now?
I think Manuela sort of answered that earlier. You know, if you're a fine dining restaurant and people want to come in and have that whole romantic experience with the tablecloth and and, you know, dim lights. Because I've been in the restaurant before and it's fabulous. Yet that's probably, it's hard to wrap your head around that, I imagine. But I certainly see many people on here. Peter Cooper Stein with Amici's. I mean, you know, this seems like it would work very well with a lot of restaurants.
Absolutely. And I think there are some restaurants that are not pivoting and some that are, right? Like there's, I I live in Walnut Creek and there are a good number of steak houses that have suddenly, that didn't have to go before, right? Because steak doesn't travel well. But they they changed their method because they needed to. And so I think it's, you know, for brands who really need to pivot and need those options, I think it's a great additional option. And for those that that don't and want to sort of protect the the quality and experience of their product, excellent, I think, you know, if if you've got the business then it's it's fantastic to not need the takeout platform.
I have to shout out to one of our local restaurants, Porter House. He does a beautiful steak salad. I mean, it is delicious, so.
Yeah, he actually offers cooked orders or uncooked orders.
Oh, wow.
So you have a choice. Uncooked is at a discount. So question, do you offer cash back in a form of a fundraising campaign? I'm sorry, interrupt you.
No, 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 I was just gonna say, I saw that question pop up. No, we don't currently, but as mentioned earlier, we are discussing ways that customers can give back through the platform. So there will be something to come, probably starting with Nurses Day in May, but yeah, more to come on that.
Yeah, that's coming up in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Maybe next week. Okay.
I see a comment from our chair, chairman of the board, Sally Gosila. The crab feed was delicious. We had it for Easter. We've also ordered pizza from Domenico's. We plan on buying the pizza kits too. So I I think that this, you know, this platform today, I hope that it benefited you. We will do it again. I think this is important to connect with one another and share ideas. We're all in this together. So thank you for being here today and make sure you order takeout tonight from one of our local restaurants. And and we'll see you again soon. You will be sent all the information that was provided today. So thank you very much. Have a wonderful week. Let's support one another. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for this. Thank you. Bye.